City Council meeting of Granville. Marcy, before you call the roll, Ken or Randy, knowing we have some strong thunderstorms coming through, if the Zoom call gets shorted out, or people lose internet, or whatever, is there a process we should be considering?
I think we'll first try to just continue by people rejoining. If we have difficulty with that, we may have to just postpone and table.
All right, well, we'll just roll with it. Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Meringa.
Here.
Nordhook.
Here.
Steenstra.
Here.
Steenstra.
Truus.
Truus.
Here.
Vanderwijk.
Here.
And Mayor Mas.
Well, tonight, we have Pastor Ryan with us to lead the invocation, and then we'll follow it up with a pledge of allegiance. Pastor Ryan.
Thank you, JR. As you feel so comfortable, I would invite you to pray with me. Gracious God, we thank you for this day, for this opportunity to gather together. We pray for your guiding presence in each one of our lives in a challenging time. We pray for our school administrators and teachers as we return to the school year in the many forms in which it will present itself. We pray for those who have lost jobs or those who are furloughed due to COVID as well. We lift up those who are ill or who have experienced losses as a result of the pandemic. We ask that you would be in this community of Granville, that you would help us to support one another's in the best ways that we can, that you would give us wisdom as decisions are made here tonight and over coming months, that you would guide us by your grace as we seek to pursue justice and equality and grace in our community in which we live. We pray all of these things in your precious name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance through the flag.
States of the next two republics, which is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before you have the agenda, any corrections or not as there a motion to approve the agenda as is?
So moved.
Motion and support, all in favor, say aye.
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 Host. All right, before we begin, Mayor Mas has asked for excused absence. He had a family conflict with travel today. Is there a motion to excuse Mayor Mas from tonight's meeting?
So moved. Support. Almost.
Motion and support. Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Nordhook.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truus.
Yes.
Meringa.
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Vanderwijk.
Yes. Before you have the minutes from our last meeting of July 27th, had a chance to look over those, are there any additions, corrections? If not, is there a motion to approve the minutes from the July 27th regular meeting?
Support, Truus.
And support, Marcy, would you call the roll on that, please?
Councilmember Steenstra.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truus.
Yes.
Meringa.
Yes.
Nordhook.
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Vanderwijk.
Yes. Presentation of the bills, we have two different fiscal years. Ken, would you like to go over the fiscal year 2019, 2020 bills, please?
That, as council's pretty used to, but this time in August, the old fiscal year bills are starting to fade away a little bit as the invoices trickle in. It's a much shorter list than it was the last meeting and a much smaller amount. I really didn't flag anything for particular attention. They're all fairly routine bills that we're used to seeing on a regular basis.
Thank you, Ken. Any questions from council for Ken on the fiscal 2019, 2020 presentation of the bills? If not, is there a motion to approve those bills?
So moved, Steenstra.
Support, Nordhook.
Motion and support, Marcy, would you call the rolls on those?
Councilmember Tim Steenstra. Steenstra.
Tim, can you hear us?
Tim.
Raise your hand if you can hear us.
Yes.
Truus.
Yes.
Meringa.
Yes.
Nordhook.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Vanderwijk.
Yes. Ken, let's look at the second set and the amount of $239,286.85 for, no, I'm sorry, that's not the right one. $256,337.74. Anything to note on that set of bills, please?
Yeah, that's obviously the longer list and the higher total. It represents, you know, the full activity of the new fiscal year, kind of coming into being here at the later stages of July, first part of August. First thing to note probably is on pages one and two, the election workers are all listed there for the work that they did last week during the August primary election. On page four, and actually, there's several bills here that are all related to council previous approvals. On page four, Striker, that's the CPR system for the fire department that was authorized by council on July 13. On page five, for Camp and Crews, was the invoice for about $3,900 for the Easy Dock trailer for storing and transporting the kayak launch from Grand River. On page eight, and that was approved back by council in March. On page eight, Lewis Municipal Sales was the pipe cutting saw that was authorized by council on the 27th of July, 3,160. And on page eight, also Kennedy and Industries, there's a billing there related to the pump rebuild, the Wallace Street sanitary lift station that was approved by council on July 13. So quite a bit of your authorizations have now reached fruition there as well. There may be other questions, but those are the ones I flagged for council attention right now.
Thank you, Ken. Council, any additional questions for Ken on the new fiscal year bills? All right, if not, is there a motion to approve the fiscal year 2020, 2021 bills in the amount of $256,337.74?
Almost. Support.
Motion and support. Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Truus.
Yes.
Meringa.
Yes.
Nordhook.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Vanderwijk.
Yes. Public comments, before we open up for public comment, Marcy, would you please go over the reminders on how to make public comments?
If you're joining us over Zoom, but we're utilizing the raise your hand method. If you're joining us by telephone, pressing star six will toggle your mute and unmute. Pressing star nine will raise your hand and let me know that you have a comment. If all else fails, raise your hand, wave your hands around, we'll find you.
Thank you, Marcy. All right, open up for public comment. Please just state your name, your address, and what is on your mind this evening?
We don't see anybody.
Okay. All right, moving along to ordinances and resolutions. We have a zoning ordinance to introduce and table an amendment regarding exterior lighting. I've asked Assistant City Manager Matt Butts to kind of give us a brief overview of this and open up the council for any questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Planning Commission has been working on this ordinance for some time. COVID really slowed them down with the meeting schedule. It's an amendment of section 16.7. C, which is an existing section that deals with exterior lighting. The language has been amended. Basically, what's in your packet is the first line is the existing ordinance. Rest of it is the amended part. I stole the language from the city of Grand Rapids, they have this lighting. The intent of the ordinance is to prevent any accent lighting to be outlined property lines, windows, doors, roofs, et cetera, to go from accent to attention-getting lighting. This would not regulate, obviously, holiday lighting, but that's to try to keep that accent lighting, accent lighting, not attention-getting. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Matt. Any questions from council for Matt about the amendment to the exterior lighting? All right, no questions. Randy, do we need to file this as two motions, one to introduce and then one to table?
That's how you usually do it, yes.
Okay, is there a motion to introduce the zoning ordinance regarding the amendment to the exterior lighting?
So moved, Steenstra. Support, Truus.
Motion and support to introduction. Marcy, would you call the roll on that, please?
Councilmember Meringa.
Yes.
Nordhook.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truus.
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Vanderwijk. And Mayor Pro Tem Vanderwijk. Uh-oh.
My health.
Looks like we lost JR a little.
Wait for a few moments, see if he can get back in.
Yeah, like, that was a little bit of foreshadowing that JR asked, what do we do if the storm gets tonight?
If he can't get in on Zoom, he can use the audio-only phone approach, too.
He's going to try to come back in.
I did hear some thunder, but it sounded like it was farther away than JR's house. It's probably good that we're not at Wedgewood Park tonight.
And Ken, what does, what does happen if we don't have the mayor and the mayor pro tem?
You know, that's probably a question for Randy, but I think you designate somebody.
That's correct. Designate somebody to be the chair of the meeting.
Gotcha.
There's our guy. Did I jinx it by saying that out loud, everybody?
You absolutely did.
I apologize. I hope that doesn't happen again, but we'll roll with it. I don't know where we left off. Marcy, would you kindly remind us where we were?
We're going to, we're tabling the ordinance right now.
Okay, is there any?
A motion to table.
Did you get the mayor's vote on it in introducing it? I think you were at the mayor's vote to introduce it, who was the last to vote on that motion.
Yes.
And then it went dead.
Is that good enough, Marcy? Marcy, yes?
So, yes.
All right, now is there a motion to table the amendment regarding exterior lighting?
So moved, Steenstra.
Support, Meringa.
Motion and support. Marcy, would you call the roll on that, please?
Councilmember Nordhook.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Steenstra. Steenstra.
Yep.
Meringa.
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Vanderwijk.
Yes. All right, before we move to, or actually, let's move to number two, a resolution on creating a Fourth of July committee. Matt, I'm sorry, Ken, would you just briefly run through where we're at with this before we open up to council discussion?
Yeah, this, this follows on the heels of council conversation at the last city council meeting, but it actually goes back to the January strategic planning session where city council selected this as one of four or five topics that night that you wished to discuss, and we went through all those items on that January night. At the end of that, there was a conclusion that the council did want to create a new resolution with regard to the Fourth of July committee. Initially, we started down the road of a subcommittee, the Park and Rec Board, and that resolution that did that was actually presented at the last city council meeting. There was conversation by the city council at that point that they wished to see an amended resolution that would create separate committees for both the Park and Rec Board and the normal park and recreation activity versus the Fourth of July. And so since that two weeks ago conversation, Randy Cracker had prepared the document as before you tonight. We collaborated on that, so hopefully, we pulled together the sense that the city council was going for. It does separate those into two separate committees. The Fourth of July committee would serve specifically for the purposes of overseeing the Fourth of July celebration every year. The Park and Rec Board would continue to focus on park and recreation items, master plan, park rules, things of that nature. The separate committee, as it's been drafted, would have an unlimited membership, and that kind of reflects council conversation of wanting to create an opportunity for more people to get involved in this particular activity. But it would be led by a steering committee appointed by the council that, at this point, is written as a nine-member steering committee, including one member recommended by the school board. It does authorize subcommittees to be created, if necessary, by the steering committee, and it specifically authorizes the solicitation of contributions and sponsorships, as had been discussed by the council at the last meeting. So it's here, this is the first time you've seen it in this form. And like I said, we've thought we took the flavor of the conversation at the last meeting, but now is the ideal opportunity for the city council to think about this, and if there are any changes or anything that we need to modify to be closer to your vision on this, we'd be happy to do so. Council has the opportunity tonight to modify it and adopt it, to adopt it as is, to table it for further conversation. And we're prepared to follow your lead where council wishes to go.
All right, thank you, Ken. I had just rejoined from my iPhone. This is becoming a problem, so I'll just try to, this way. So, Ken, thank you for leading us through that. I know council's had many discussions about this already. I guess it's kind of free to speak as we wish. Anybody care to kind of open it up to start us off here?
I'd be, I'd be happy to, JR. Since I wasn't at the last meeting, I was able to read your guys' notes, and I do like what's, what's before us in a two-committee approach. So kind of my, my thoughts on this is, I appreciate the last two weeks that we've been able to hear from some members, but from our initial meeting earlier this winter, and including all the communication that we got over the last two weeks, you know, by my count, I think we've heard from Ben, Joyce, Bob, Erica, Zach, Sue, of course, Josh is with us here, Kim, Carolyn, and Courtney. And so that's 10 members that we've been able to hear their opinions of. It feels like that's a lot of good input that we've been able to have. And amidst that, I really do believe that they've been so successful in developing this Fourth of July parade over the many years of it in Granville, that it's outgrown one committee, and it really needs a committee that can focus on simply that, where we have one that focuses on parks and one that focuses on the Fourth of July. Really, that Fourth of July parade has become more of a regional activity, and so it really is deserving of a committee to just manage it entirely. And kind of the way that I see it and how it's written up, it sounds like people can serve on two committees. We don't have any kind of limit on how many committees people can serve on, and so there's a lot of knowledge right now in the Parks and Rec Board, and I certainly would hope that some of that knowledge would make it over to serve on a Fourth of July committee as well. I think that makes a lot of sense, and so it's not really excluding anyone. I rather would be inclusive of other members of the community. And one of the biggest things that, at least, I ran on and wanted to be part of city council was for getting more people empowered to take ownership over their community. I think it's a great opportunity for us to involve a lot more people. Every single year continually, Parks and Rec is one of our most popular applications when we, when we look for committee assignments, and we deny people all the time for it, and so I think this is a good opportunity to get other people taking a strong ownership in their community. So I see this as like a win-win all around, where we can have two committees focused on exactly what they need to. We can have more people involved in the community, and I think, I think it's overall win-win. So I really like what's, what's laid out and what you guys discussed last week. I'd be in favor of this kind of an approach, so that's my, my two cents.
Thank you, Randy. Anybody else?
Sure, Chair. I would concur with what Andy says, although I would like to see us modify item number two, who shall be residents of the city of Granville, and change that to residents of the Granville School District.
Thanks, Tim. Anybody else? Josh?
Yeah, so I'll just kind of reiterate what I said a couple of weeks ago. I don't know exactly which is the right direction to go here, whether it's a subcommittee of the Park and Rec Board, as we originally discussed, or if it's a separate committee, but bottom line is, the Park and Rec Board hasn't met since February, hasn't had a chance to discuss this in any more detail, hasn't had a chance to react to or review the written documents that have been presented to formally create a subcommittee or a separate committee. So I feel like this ought to be tabled pending the opportunity for the Park and Rec Board to have some discussion, to weigh the pros and cons of either approach, to see who may be interested in moving in one direction or the other. We have some longstanding volunteers that have basically run the Fourth of July committee for the Fourth of July celebration for the last couple of years, and I think that their input should be considered. And I'm concerned that if we don't include folks from the Park and Rec Board and just kind of plow ahead with this decision without giving them an opportunity to weigh in and have some further discussion about this, that we're going to lose some really good volunteers. And I hope that doesn't happen. I like the idea of being more inclusive and giving more people the opportunity to participate. I've said that before, but I guess my preference would be to table this and let the Park and Rec Board have a chance to review it and weigh in and make a recommendation if they can. I know there'll be different opinions there, but I think we at least owe it respect to give them a chance to take a look at this and need to do so.
Thanks, Josh. Justin, go ahead.
And I would just echo everything that Josh just said. I am just confused why we don't want to take a moment to pause and allow them to formally do so. You know, the Parks and Rec Board, historically, outside of the Fourth of July, there isn't a whole lot. That's what a lot of the members report saying, there isn't a whole lot that they have formal power over. They're largely an advisory board. And so it strikes me that the one thing we're not doing is letting them advise us, and I just, I don't see that as right. I think we need to pause and give them a chance to do this and have each person's voice heard in a formalized session and send those recommendations back to us. It honors the volunteerism of each member of the board by giving them that voice. So I would support the motion to table if that was a motion.
Josh, is that a formal motion?
Well, it's discussion right now, I guess, but I'd be happy to make that motion if we're done discussing.
Well, I'd just like to ask a question. Justin and Josh, do you feel, do you feel that we haven't gotten input from the Parks and Rec Board? I felt like we did get input in January.
I think we've gotten a lot of input. I think it's different when, and the purpose of a board is to sit down and collaborate with one another. I don't think this helps heal any division when we're operating by proxy or by email. There's a purpose behind holding boards. If we, if we could just operate by email, I don't think we necessarily need any boards any longer. We'll just have people send us their thoughts. So I recognize that we have heard from people, but I want this to be done in the, in the formal process that it's meant to occur in.
Yeah, I would agree. I think we, Tim, we have gotten some input from members. That was a number of months ago. There wasn't any formal written resolution for anyone to respond to at that time. It was really more brainstorming and backfinding and information gathering. I think now that we have some kind of formal written type of process here that we're looking at, we need to come back and have a chance to, to give them a chance to respond to that, make any suggestions for tweaks that might be necessary, looking at the details. We didn't get into details when we talked in January, February.
Paul, I thought I said, and, yeah.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, I think it makes sense to pause here and to get the Mayor Mas's input, too. It is, it is a big step. That said, I, I thought Andy did a great job of laying out all the positives here, and I support the proposal. And I would just add to what he said, is that I think it, it has the potential of giving the Park and Rec Board more oomph, you know, get them running on all cylinders, you know, and focused on parks and rec, if you can separate out two functions. So it makes sense to me. Also, I guess I wonder why, why hasn't the park board been meeting for months? Other, other committees have been meeting, right? Like the Planning Commission and others. So why is it that the park board has not been meeting, Josh?
Well, initially, it was COVID, and nobody was meeting. We skipped the meeting as well back in March. And I think it was once we decided that we weren't going to move forward with the Fourth of July celebration, there wasn't really a need or any pressing issues to meet, to discuss. A lot of stuff in operations kind of was put on hold for a couple of months there, too, with the parks. And I know Courtney's been in consultation with Charlie and with city staff, Ken and Matt, and there hasn't been any kind of pressing decisions that need to be made. We're all kind of waiting for the results of that application that was made for that grant, just like, just like we are here. You know, there's a lot of work that went into that Park and Rec master plan and going through reviewing those applications and the grants and so forth. And it really just hasn't been much to, that's urgent that is to be dealt with right now as far as parks are concerned. So Courtney made the decision to cancel the meetings, and we haven't really pursued meeting by Zoom, which I think probably do need to get together in some format here, because it has been quite a few months since we've been able to meet in person.
Well, there is this major proposal from council that the Park and Rec Board could have discussed. Also, at that planning, at that planning meeting where there were most of the park board members were present, I specifically asked for it to take a look at that outdated water chute park and to give us a proposal and, and, you know, to study that. And I thought, boy, that's something to really dig your teeth into and spend months, you know, researching and look and come up with different ideas, but, you know, nothing, you know, and the fact that this board hasn't met since they decided to cancel the Fourth of July kind of indicates to me that this board thinks that their only job is the Fourth of July. So that indicates there is part of a potential problem here. So, but that said, I'm comfortable waiting for the next meeting. I'm done.
Yeah, I kind of echo that, though. I mean, if we do wait and get Mayor Mas's opinion, which I'm completely comfortable with, and if we want to get the input, again, of some of these members, but more in a formal process, I guess that's all right. I think I can guess where it's going to end up, and I think that we might have some hurt feelings on the other way after that board meets and gives a recommendation, and if this board decides to reject that recommendation and go a separate way. But regardless, I'm fine with getting more input. That's, that's not a big deal. I'm concerned about the timing of that input. So if, if we have to wait another month, what we're going to keep doing is we're going to be pushing this back, because then we're going to have a month where we have to wait for the input, and then we have to approve this. And then we would need to look at having the Park and Rec Board actually split, if that's the way we wanted to go. And then that creates, or if it's a subcommittee, it's going to create structural changes that need to be worked out. And you get to a certain point where And you get to a certain point where we're going to be behind on the Fourth of July for 2021 if we continue to push this down. So I'm fine with waiting, but I'd really like to to take this up again then at the next meeting, get Mayor Mas's opinion, give the Parks and Rec Board enough time where they can meet over Zoom in the next two weeks and discuss it and give us a formal recommendation. But then we can move on so that we don't waste a lot of time in what's going to be a lot of steps for us to get to a functional committee or subcommittee that's going to be able to start planning the Fourth of July in 2021. Well, thanks for the input, everybody. Tim, you got something else to add?
Yeah, last question. If we would table this tonight, is it possible to get Josh to to get the input from the Parks and Rec Board so that we can vote on this resolution in two weeks?
Then we normally meet the Fourth Wednesday of the month.
So if you haven't for the last few months, so could you call a meeting together?
I could ask the Chair to call a meeting together.
Well, he's here tonight, so let's see what he says.
You know, that was the next thing on my kind of notes was to maybe reopen up the public comment, especially if there are some members of the Parks and Rec Board that are on this call. If you do care to comment on this subject, feel free to do so appropriately. Marcy has outlined those rules earlier in the meeting. So if anybody else wants to speak up on that, feel free to do so now. Marcy, do you have anybody?
I'm not seeing any comments.
No? Well, while we wait, JR, just because I didn't know who said what from the notes in the last meeting, I'd love to hear your opinion too of kind of where you sit.
Yeah, no, thanks. This being as chairing this meeting is it just kind of puts you in a weird spot. But, you know, I'm hearing, you know, everything that everyone's saying. I'm okay with waiting as well to, you know, let Mayor Mas weigh in on this. But I do think that the longer we wait, the harder it's going to get to pull off our bigger and better celebration for next year. You know, we're always planning for something that's in the future, whether it's Fourth of July for next year. And I guess I would rather start planning for Fourth of July in August, September, October, rather than April or May of next year. So I think there is some urgency on this, but at the same time, I think we all know where this is going, but I think we just, you know, should probably also give some inclusiveness to everybody else on this too.
JR, this is Randy in response to an earlier question. I think the motion can be made that directs the Park and Rec Board to hold a meeting prior to the next council meeting. They can either follow your direction or not, but if you want to direct them to do that, you certainly can do that.
Thanks, Randy. Justin?
I just wanted to remind everyone that, you know, Josh is in a difficult position here. He does not control the Parks and Rec Board. It can be difficult at times as a city council member, as we all know, to be on a board and you feel one poll by members of the board who see you as the insider to the council and where do, what is the council doing? And then the council who views you as part of that board. So I just think it's important to remember that Josh is in a difficult position here. And I understand that position. And I just want to remind all of us of the difficulty of that.
Thanks, Justin. That, I think that goes without saying, Josh is not the Chair of that board. He is just our liaison to that. So Josh, thanks for being part of that liaison to the board.
Yeah, I'm not the Chair of the board. Courtney Acton is the Chair of the Park Board. And they've already decided that they're not meeting in August, I believe. Our August meeting would have been, would be the 26th, which is two days after our next council meeting. I don't know what people's plans are as far as summer vacations and being available to meet in two weeks. I could certainly ask her if it's possible, feasible to meet on the 26th, but that wouldn't be prior to our next council meeting. So we'd have to wait until the meeting in September, or the next council meeting in September.
This is a body that hasn't met since February, is that right?
I think we did meet in February. We didn't meet since COVID.
Right, so February was last meeting. I think it makes sense for council to direct them to have a meeting since they seem to be having trouble doing that. Council's been able to manage this via Zoom. Other bodies that I'm on, even church, you know, entities have managed Zoom meetings. So I gotta believe our Park and Rec Board can manage that, even if they're in different locales. So I will make a motion to direct the Park and Rec Board meeting, or to direct the Park and Recreation Board to meet sometime in the next two weeks prior to the city council meeting, next city council meeting.
I would support that.
I'll support that, but Carolyn has a comment. I see her hand up. So JR, just before we vote, I would want to hear from her. Yeah, thanks, Andy. Carolyn, what you got?
Well, I wasn't going to speak out. You heard me speak two weeks ago. Josh has sent communications to everybody on that Park and Rec Board and it has asked everybody on that Park and Rec Board to look at what the proposal was and to get back, either attend tonight's meeting or to pass along information. As I indicated to you two weeks ago, meeting again, I can tell you flat out, it's going to be a 50/50. Half the people, I mean, part of the reason we haven't met, as Paul has pointed out, we didn't meet because first of all, COVID canceled the meeting, then Fourth of July, and it's been a, well, who cares? We don't need to meet. We're not working on Fourth of July. Somebody even suggested meeting in August and somebody else poo-pooed it and said, we don't need to meet. We don't have any reason to meet. So it truly is, Fourth of July is over and done with. We don't need to start working on Fourth of July until September, October, November. We, there's plenty of time. If you want to direct them to meet, fine and dandy, but it's going to have to be on Zoom because there's no location large enough for us to hold our meeting at, which is, you know, problematic in one sense there too. So kicking it down the road, as somebody said, you're just kicking the can down the road by postponing it. But Josh has tried to get people to respond. If they haven't, it's not because they were unaware. That's all.
Thank you, Carolyn. All right, there's a motion from Paul and I believe I saw support from Tim on on directing the Parks and Rec Board to have a special meeting before our next council meeting. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right, Marcy, would you call the role on that motion, please?
Councilmember Steenstra?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Tru?
Yes.
Meringa?
No.
Nordhook?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Vanderwaal?
Yes. All right, so we're directing the Parks and Rec Board to meet prior to our next meeting. That being said, do we need to formally table this resolution then? Randy, is that where we're at?
Yes, you should.
Can I make a motion to table it? But I also like Tim's suggestion about the school district. So I would move that we table the resolution with that additional language added to it.
That may be two, that may be two separate questions. You may want to divide that into whether or not you want to change the language to be resident, non-resident. And then separately, if that passes, then you table that one. If it doesn't pass, you table it without the change.
Okay, then I move that we strike the language in section two that reads Resident of Granville and change that to Resident of Granville Public Schools.
Okay, motion and support on that. I guess Randy, does that kind of cover us for, before we vote on this? Does that cover that part of the resolution?
Yes, it does. It's really, it's a school district, Granville School District.
Okay. And Ken, do you, does that, well, I guess, Marcy, would you call the role on that, please?
Councilmember Tim Steenstra?
Yes.
Tru?
Yes.
Meringa?
Which motion are we voting on? Tableing it or changing it to include the school district?
School district.
Say no.
Nordhook?
Yes.
Andy Steenstra?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Vanderwaal?
Yes. Okay, so that covers that section of that. Do we have a motion now to table the entire resolution till our next meeting? So moved. Steenstra?
Support. Tru?
All right, motion and support on that. Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Tru?
Yes.
Meringa?
Yes.
Nordhook?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Vanderwaal?
Yes. All right, moving along. The consent agenda, as you can see, actually, Ken, would you run us through the consent agenda just briefly?
Sure. In your packet tonight, you've got the July report from the Police Department of their operations for that particular month. You recall that recently we changed to monthly reports as opposed to quarterly. So you're seeing that fresher and hopefully that's helpful to city council. If you have any questions, you see Paul's name up there. So I think you can get some help from the Chief of Police on anything that you might want clarification on there. Also, the Treasurers' Report for July, which is the first full month of the 20-2021 fiscal year. And we have no purchases or other proclamations or other activity tonight. So it's just those two items. And that means a motion to approve the consent agenda tonight need not be in the best interest of the city.
All right, thank you, Ken. All right, so everyone's seen the reports from those committees. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion and support. Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Meringa?
Yes.
Nordhook?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Tru?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Vanderwaal?
Yes. City Manager Report. Ken, a couple of things on there. Let's dive into the first first one if you'd like, or you can kind of, you know, bring those two together if you want, but lead us through those policy reviews, please.
Sure. I think I will just describe both together. These are administrative policies that council reviews on occasion. These two are timely, particularly right now because we're entering open enrollment for health insurance for the year. And the HR folks have looked at these and said, you know, there's some inconsistencies here. This would be the ideal time to correct those. And so what you have is initially a policy that is existing from 2006 with regard to health savings accounts. At that point, we were just entering the realm of how health savings accounts work and getting the city organized to do that. Initially, with all of our employee groups, the city's contribution to the HSA was made in a single lump sum on October 1, which is the start of the health insurance year. In the intervening years, we've renegotiated contracts with all the other employee groups and have actually changed that to making periodic deposits to the employees' accounts from the city. It adds up to the same amount, but the main reason for that was we discovered after the fact that we, despite language that was agreed to in the contracts, if somebody left shortly after the start of a health insurance year, there was no way to recoup those annual contributions. Once they were there, even though we had language that said it was prorated if somebody retired or left a mid-year, we really couldn't do that. So in the contracts, we corrected that by making periodic payments three times a year. 50% deposited initially at the start of a health insurance year in October 1, and then 25% additionally on January 1 and April 1. So because we're doing open enrollment now, it'd be very helpful to have it consistent across the board. This is the non-union employees, the last of what I'll call five employee groups, the other four being represented by collective bargaining agreements. And so we're proposing that change to spread those payments out over three different periods of time. And there's a protection to the city for that. And it does correct the language that we had thought worked for us initially with regard to prorated payments back, but that, this is what we need to do. The second one is similarly catching up. This particular group to language has been adopted in all of the other union contracts. Those agreements over time have grown what is a city reimbursement for optical expense from $150 per calendar year to $200. This is the only group that remains at 150. The other agreements also provide that up to that limit of $200 per year, you can apply that to either the employee or the employee's dependents. And this particular policy, in addition to being $50 less per year, also restricted the use to the employee only. So by making a policy change here to increase it to 200 and apply it to dependents, it would put all of the city employees on the same playing field with regard to the policies for the city. The way we typically do policy amendments is we bring them to the council for you to be advised of them, to consider any questions that you have, to request or suggest modification. And we, similar to ordinances, we review them once and then return them to the council meeting two weeks later for final action. That's not a charter requirement. It's just kind of the way that we've developed our procedures and the way that seemed comfortable for the council. And so that's what we would propose tonight, is that the council review these, give us any feedback, any modifications or questions that you have, and then we can bring them back to you. But having said that, I would also say it is not a charter requirement that we do it this way. And if the council was comfortable with the policies, the way they were written, you certainly can approve them the same night you see them, if you're comfortable doing so.
Thanks, Ken. Just out of curiosity, how often do policy reviews come up like this? Is this a pretty concurrent thing or is it pretty random?
You know, they generally have popped up as particular issues arose. But we've got a bigger, kind of more comprehensive policy review that we'd like to go back to all of them and bring them all to you in a more polished form. That process has started. It stalled somewhat. Obviously, COVID is at an impact. And just pre-bonding issues in the course of a springtime here. So it has sat a little bit. We still intend to bring, hopefully, a deeper list of these things, as you can tell from the dates on these policies. They've not been looked at in many years. And so we're just due to review these things and see where corrections and updates need to be made. But having said that, even once we do that, some of these things you just don't know about until something pops up that creates a need to review them. So we'll probably go about it both ways as we move forward.
All right, thanks, Ken. Council, any thoughts on either or both of these policies? Policy reviews? You know, this, the process here of coming back in two weeks, I think, is, would be our due diligence to check that out, follow the kind of the lay of the land. And maybe come back in two weeks to formally approve or ask additional questions. Or in the meantime, send questions to you, Ken, between now and August 24th.
Yep.
So that being said, do we need to do individual policy review motions, Randy?
You really should.
Okay, is there a motion to, I guess, review in two weeks the policy review regarding health insurance and health savings account, non-union?
So moved. Support.
Motion and support. Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Nordhook?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Tru?
Yes.
Meringa?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Vanderwaal?
Yes. The second policy review, is there a motion to table for two weeks the optical benefit, non-union policy review?
So moved.
Or? Motion and support. Marcy, would you call the role on that? Motion and support, Marcy, would you call the role on that, please?
Councilmember Andy Steenstra.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truust.
Yes.
Meringa.
Yes.
Nordhook.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Vanderwaal.
Yes. We'll look forward to seeing that on our next council meeting agenda, Ken. Moving on, number three, library community space name. I had printed off all sorts of name suggestions we've received, emails through connect, and Josh had sent around an email with a load of names. I guess this is our discussion time on that. One thing I think before I open this up that I would would consider is we don't have to come up with a name. The limestone could be blank, we could ask the architect to just break it out. We don't have to come up with a name, I'm not saying that that's what we should do, but I guess just keep that in mind. If anybody feels strongly another way, I guess this is our chance to have a discussion about it.
Yeah, JR, I do think that we need to choose a name, just because our whole intent of this project, I think, is to create something that's open to many members of the community. It's not just an extension of the library, I think it's supposed to be something a little bit more than that. If we don't come up with a name, I think that it kind of just makes it an extension of the library. So I do think we need to name it, and there were plenty of good ideas there, I think, for us to have some kind of discussion and come up with something that we can all get behind.
Anybody else care to weigh in on a favorite of yours or an offering, a different opinion? Go ahead, Tim.
Yeah, I think, you know, certainly naming it after some influential people is a great idea, but the problem is we have numerous influential people in Granville. I knew Benny McCoy, lived right by Granville Christian School, was a great guy. I loved Jim Buck, lived right by our school and was a long-term mayor. And if I had to name after somebody, I'd pick one of those two guys, but I think we'd be safer picking a name that doesn't designate a person. And that would narrow it down a bit.
I agree with that. That said, I don't have a favorite, but I definitely agree, I don't want to name it that.
Well, I do know that we are at a time in the timeline of this project that we do need to come up with a name. Ken, is tonight kind of our drop dead timeline on that, coming up with?
I kind of pushed the construction manager back by a day, he actually picked, well, he picked today. And I said, can you give us till tomorrow? So the constraint here is that, if you remember the rendering, the name of the space is integral to the exterior wall and it's carved in limestone. So there's a significant lead time for that, and obviously the exterior walls happen well before the interior finishes. So he's anxious to get going on it and we do need to make a decision.
I can start us off with an idea, just to throw out there from what I was seeing, and at least give us a point to discuss and, you know, maybe something that you guys can all say it's terrible, or or you like the start of it, maybe it'll spark discussion. But when I was reading through there, there's a lot that seemed to have Granville community, really again emphasizing the community aspect, because this is more than just the library. I think that makes a lot of sense. A couple of them liked place, I think that that was a little bit vague. What I really liked was two suggestions, one that said civic center, the Granville Community Civic Center, the Granville Civic Center, and another one. So Granville Community Commons or Granville Commons. I thought both of those seem to be pretty good and expressing what we kind of intend this to be, what we want to happen around it, and also it's clear enough so people know exactly what it is without getting too hokey or cliche.
Josh or Justin, anything to weigh in on, Josh?
Yeah, I agree with part of what Andy said. I kind of would steer away from center and hall, I think that sounds a little institutional and maybe a little exclusive. I do like the idea of place or commons, that came up a couple of different times, Granville Community Commons, Granville Community Place, River Bend, Bend in the River, Community Commons, Community Place. There's a few of those that are in there like that, I like something with commons or place. I don't know exactly what we put in front of it, but I think that, and I like the community aspect of it, like Andy said as well, so. Helps narrow it down a little bit.
Go ahead, Justin.
I agree with everything that was said about naming after a person and emphasizing community. I really, I thought there were some very creative ones, I kind of liked the person who submitted the Granville Reed Community Center, Reed Center, and the Reed was an acronym for something. And I had Granville Community Center, but I'm really not so opinionated on any of these, I'm open to whatever.
Yeah, you know, I'm thinking about this too, you know, I have known, had known Mayor Buck for a while too, and his wife Katie, she was very influential in the city as well. I'm sure, Tim, that narrows it down to one of the families that you were talking about, that was not a singular person. You know, in my mind, I had thought about how we could all be sitting, you know, in the council chambers and we could create a poll and a voting process for all of this. I don't see that happening here, and Ken, I know we're already, you know, twenty-four hours behind the contractor's deadline, so. You know, I guess if somebody wants to make a motion with something specific, I think that's where we start. And we may make five votes tonight and see where it ends up, but, or we can take a poll, I don't know if anybody has a different idea, or we can all say one and we can, I don't know, anybody else have any creative Zoom strategies for coming up with something?
Well, I guess maybe just we can throw out one, I mean, Josh, Josh and I seem to be thinking along the same lines as commons. Does any, can anyone else get behind that word of Granville Commons or Granville Community Commons, or does anyone have strong feelings against it?
I like Commons.
I'm fine with it.
All right, so would you guys want community in there, or do you just want Granville Commons?
You know, I think if we go to, if we're involved in name, I think community sounds better, and I think if we avoid a name, I think putting Granville in there. I think, I think we're funneling this thing down, and I think, Andy, I think that's where you're going with this. So I personally like Commons and I like community, that's where I stand on those first two questions you asked.
Yeah, and I endorse that, JR, Community Commons sounds great to me.
Paul, would you, are you behind that as well?
Yeah, yeah, I like it, I don't like place, but I like Commons, yeah.
Okay, so, so I guess I'd make the motion then that we name the center, what, Community Commons, that's what we're talking about? Or would it include Granville in front of it?
I like Granville in front of it.
You do or you don't like it?
I do, yeah, I like Granville in front of it, I like Community Commons.
I'd support that too.
I think people will call it Granville Community Commons anyway, because kind of identify where it is.
Okay, so I'll move to name it the Granville Community Commons.
Support.
All right, motion and support. So we are voting to name the extension of library to the Granville Community Commons. Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Tim Steenstra.
Yes.
Truust.
Yes.
Meringa.
Yes.
Nordhook.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Vanderwaal.
Yes. Thanks, everybody, for that, that was impactful and helpful, and I'm hopeful that Mayor Moss will think that's a great idea as well. But if not, that's okay, we had six, we had six to zero on that. Ken, anything else, I know there's been some chatter about some things happening in the community, anything else you want to add to the city manager's report?
Yeah, a couple of things probably for council tonight, but before we get too far from the decision you just made, which is pretty impressive, really, I think, to get to consensus that fast over Zoom when you had five pages of options here. But I don't know the space limitations or what that does to the size of the signage. So I guess I would just say, if the wall needs to say Community Commons, is that acceptable? The Granville's probably implied, if we can get it on, we'll certainly do that, and we can still label it indoors that way, but does anybody have a problem if we have to do that?
Oh, that's fine, Ken.
Okay, all right, thanks. Couple other items tonight, I wanted to highlight, for those who may not be aware of it, that starting at six AM tomorrow, the city of Wyoming, which is our wholesale water supplier for Granville, and I think thirteen other communities, is instituting a temporary sprinkling ban, it's not an odd even, it's a ban. So starting tomorrow morning, we will not be able to irrigate our yards and gardens and plants and flowers as they make a repair to one of the two major water supply mains that traverse Ottawa County to get water to the metropolitan area from Lake Michigan. It sounds like they're pretty confident this can go relatively quickly, but I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that. The city clerk's office has already put information on this on the website, and if there's any specific questions, we'll be referring them to the Wyoming utility people, but I think it's generally pretty easy, we just can't do it until they gain their capacity back to be able to continue to provide the amount of water and drink, the heat of the summer here during the repair. So that's for council info. I wanted to talk briefly about the next meeting. We talked about trying to get one of the two August city council meetings outdoors, and we did not do it tonight, which maybe feels like a pretty good call. But we're going to hope that the weather is better on the next meeting, and if we get close enough to see that that weather looks better, we'd like to try to pull off another in-person one, I just think it really is appreciated by the council members and by the public and and as long as we have a little cooperation from the weather folks, we'd like to do that. We are, however, approaching the end of the summer, and we've done a little research on sunset times, and we're getting squeezed a bit. I think the sunset, if I recall, I think I put it in the memo, but I think it was eight thirty or something on that night, maybe it was even earlier than that. What was it? It's here somewhere, but I'm wondering, at this point, I don't know how long that agenda is going to be, there were a couple of items tabled tonight to that meeting, so I'm suspicious that it's going to be a decent agenda. And thinking that because we don't have outdoor lighting at the Wedgewood Park picnic pavilion, that it may be helpful for us to be able to schedule that meeting to start earlier than the normal seven o'clock start time. And by that, I would say six or six thirty at the latest. So I wanted to run that past council tonight and see if that created any difficulties. Certainly, if we can't do it either for weather or light, you know, we can still continue to meet on Zoom, but if we know we have that flexibility, that might make it more likely that we can pull off an outdoor meeting.
All right, council, should we discuss that briefly about meeting on August twenty-fourth, whether the Wedgewood Park is a good idea, first of all, and then, second of all, if we should move that time up by either a half an hour or an hour? Any feelings either way on that?
I like the idea, going back to Wedgewood, appreciate that, Ken. Certainly, time isn't an issue for me, but I'm sensitive to people who are working and would like to hear from them what times the earliest they could be there.
I think that would be Josh and Justin.
Yeah, I could probably make six thirty work, I don't think I could do sex, I've got to go across town to get my kids after work and get back, and I don't think sex is practical for me.
That should be good enough if sunset is at eight thirty.
Paul?
Yeah, that's fine with me, I wonder if maybe we want to, just on a side subject, consider getting lighting in the pavilion there at Wedgewood Park. My trombone group has been practicing over there on Tuesday night, and I noticed after eight o'clock, it does get pretty dim under there, you know, so I know, it's just something to think about.
Arts and rec.
I'll, I'll talk to Charlie a little bit, we've got power there, so it's gonna be difficult, the biggest things are probably, does it encourage, you know, other activity that we don't want to encourage happening, you know, late at night in a park? What about, how do you protect against vandalism, you know, kind of those usual park facility questions, so we can look at that. I don't know that, and I'll defer to Randy if he thinks otherwise, but I don't know that we necessarily need to have a motion tonight to set that meeting for six thirty. We, I mean, we can put a notice up in advance of the meeting, we're going to need to anyway if the location changes to Wedgewood. We would just have highlighted on there two different changes, the location change and the time change. I did just see in my memo, sunset's actually eight eighteen, so from a seven o'clock start, that's, we're at eight oh six now, tonight, so it's darker than it probably typically is on a clear night, but I can see what Paul's saying, it does get pretty dim out there, and if need be, we probably can rig up something temporary, but I would appreciate the six thirty flexibility and the opportunity to try to make this outdoor meeting happen for the second time this summer.
Yeah, I think so too, I think also meeting at a park with a fairly substantial park and rec agenda item, I think that's very fitting as well. I'm okay with the six thirty start time, and I think we'll probably just kind of play it by ear, Ken, as you kind of keep an eye on forecast and the size of the agenda, that sort of thing. Does anybody have a problem, I know we're not voting on this, but does anybody have a problem with the six thirty start time? No? Ken, one question about the sprinkling ban, did the city of Wyoming give, did they say a week, did they say a couple of days? I don't know if they gave a timeframe.
I think they had said, plan for two weeks. I think they're hopeful they can do better than that, but that two-week timeframe is the number that I had heard.
Okay. And obviously, we will shoot out publications and PR regarding that as soon as they open that back up. Which leads me to, and Marcy, sorry to put you on the spot here, but I know we're getting close on the website, anything you want to share with us briefly about the website progress?
It's almost ready, everybody's been trained, staff went through training last week. Everybody's been assigned their user IDs, I've been in there myself making changes already. Would you like to see a preview?
Yeah, can we do that?
Yeah. Bear with me here. Okay, so this is the homepage. Are you able to see all of this?
Yeah.
Okay. Behind here, you have your alerts that will be, that will pop up. I've already been editing them. We have our upcoming events down here. We have some featured events over here, we've got the August thirty-one meeting already up there. We have our socia's, our Facebook, Twitter, YouTube, that'll all be up here from the main homepage. And you can access pretty much the whole website from the homepage. So if you go to government, go to city council. Very user-friendly, very clean. We have city services. And from the homepage, you'll be able to report an issue through the citizen request center, we're in the process of setting this up right now. It should be ready, it will be ready the week of the twenty-fourth. That's a preview of it.
Very nice, very nice. Initial reactions, I think it looks fantastic. Very nice, very nice. Initial reactions, I think it looks fantastic and it's a bit overdue, but that's, that's okay. That's all part of the process. Anybody else, anybody else like that?
I think it's a huge upgrade.
Agreed.
Thumbs up.
Ken, anything else on the city manager's report?
I wanted to not let Marcy deviate from the website conversation until we recognize that she's quarterbacked this thing during the course of a pretty busy summer with regard to election changes and absentee voters and dealing with customer service for COVID, you know, all those kinds of things. So I know it's been a lot of work to do that and it's fallen on her shoulders. And probably a little later than we were all hoping when we first had the presentation by revised when they were here some months ago. But still, pretty admirable job of keeping up with things here. So just thank you, Marcy, for taking the bull by the horns on that one and getting us to this point. The only other thing I have was just to highlight that the council packet that each of you received included the East Grand Rapids Anti-Discrimination Ordinance. And my memo referenced the fact that if you have, that that really serves as probably our best basis for such an ordinance in Granville, if that's the direction the council wishes to go. Had some general conversation with the city attorney about it and thought that it probably made sense to make sure that you were aware of what was in that ordinance, what was not in that ordinance, had a chance to think about your thoughts on this and anything that you feel is important to either include or not. Any questions or concerns that you might have? And encourage you, I know at least one council member has already gotten back with some comments. So encourage those who have not had the opportunity to forward those questions and those thoughts so that we can take those into consideration because the next step would be the city attorney putting this into a Granville ordinance form and bringing it back for council review and discussion. That's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Ken. All right, council member comments. Andy, let's start with you tonight.
All right. Well, I appreciate all the conversation around these things. I do think it's pretty exciting to go from, you know, a few years ago, talking about a library extension and the need for it and being able to create some kind of a community center out of it. And then go from that to tonight, being able to have a name and, you know, things are happening. It's really, really exciting. And I love the growth in our community too, that we're even having a discussion and, you know, good, healthy argument or are going to have a good, healthy discussion around creating multiple committees and just involving more people in our community and things getting so big that we need more and more help for it. So I just love it. These are, these are things that happen when your community is growing, when it's healthy. And I see our community as a pretty healthy community. So it was exciting, exciting conversation tonight for me.
Thanks, Andy. Tim, your turn.
Yeah, I just want to thank all the council members too for candid dialogue tonight and the conversation we had. It's cool to see we can come to some decisions together. And I think we work real well as a body. Also, secondly, three cheers for Marcy on the website. Hip, hip, hooray, Marcy. And then JR, kudos to you too for chairing your first meeting.
Thanks, Tim. Paul?
Thanks, JR. I'm just going to give you a thumbs up too on the really smooth meeting tonight. Well done.
You can go.
Justin?
I agree. Really well done. There was one moment where you had two screens up and I was worried you were going to try and vote twice. But outside of that, I thought you did a good job. And I just wanted to say with regards to the naming of the building and such, because I'm on the historical commission and library board, I kind of had this idea looking through all of the cool name suggestions people gave of maybe we can devote a space within the library, the commons, devoted to people like Mayor Buck and Benny McCoy and such. So that might be something the historical commission could take on, that there's a wall display of those.
Great idea.
Great job tonight.
Thanks, Josh.
Yeah, Justin, I think it's interesting. You mentioned that. I was kind of thinking the same thing. Maybe we need to start a Granville Community Hall of Fame or something that recognizes people that have made notable contributions in our community. Just an idea, maybe those can be highlighted somehow, like you said, like that idea, as well as our history. I think there's opportunity to highlight our history and share some of the historical commission has to offer in that space as well. So look forward to some ideas for different displays or ways to bring some of that, incorporating that into the building decor where we can. So I just want to say thanks to Marcy and Brittany for doing a great job on running the election last week. I know you guys were handling a lot of absentee ballots coming in and challenges with setting up pool places, you know, to be COVID safe. And following all the guidelines and we had a pretty good turnout, it sounds like as well. So just kudos to you and all the election workers. Thanks for the work that you do supporting the community and making our elections safe. And look forward to November, even bigger turnout, I'm sure. And it's a good trial run, it looks like. So good job.
Thank you.
Was that it?
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah, thanks, everybody, for a great meeting tonight. And it looks like we accomplished a lot. A lot of good kudos were spread out amongst those in attendance and those not here as well. Thanks for your patience with me. And I'm sorry I jinxed the technology. I had my phone pulled up. I had my computer going. I think I dialed in at one point. I have an eight-year-old who's scared of thunderstorms and she's running in and out. And I thought maybe I could figure out a way to vote twice on that. Justin, you beat me to it. Thank you for everybody for patience with that. And yeah, I look forward, hope to see everybody in two weeks outdoors. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion and support. All in favor, please signal by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. I was opposed. That's it. Have a good night, everybody. Thanks. Have a good night.